The first item on the agenda is celebrating Betty Bender's one hundredth birthday party. We will take a pause. We do have a proclamation. So wow. Also, what you guys. He doesn't want to come in here.
By the king door.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you so much.
Plug back in. So for those of you who don't know, Betty Jean Bender is celebrating her hundredth birthday on October third, twenty twenty five. All the best people is wearing it off there. Thank you since nineteen twenty five. Nineteen twenty six. First family. For father to take it up and constructing the building of the Jefferson. Where the day was to get Smithville home in nineteen forty two. Ohio, nineteen forty three. Betty low member June. Nineteen forty five. Certain, certain roller two. Receive. Betty low married for fifty nine years and left. Children. And Perkins. Maybe hers seven grandchildren, ten grandchildren.
Yeah.
Some never. Betty has lived during the most eventful century in history and has been a role model in this region for. Now they're more identical. Whereas the bill was a replay watched over there. Make your best wishes.
Thank you so much. We had a party. And. Over. Probably now we're and. Sometimes. They'd always find me. And then it was. I remember was correct me and when I. Porch. My baby. And brought it to the post office. Every time it's. And. Something that a lot changes a lot. We have a fire out in this town. And. When they were going to. Fix. Smithville late. I first been. And so. Cry sad. What do you have night? If I was in a. About. I could be all quality. I think that's the. Third, fourth grade. And it. Love it all. We would. On you. Oh, second floor. But I can remember look with saying. Franch was. So. Lot of changes. Lot of. That. I could live. Didn't have. Recriscity. Making with curstine lamps. And we had. Wooden stones. So. And a lot wasn't do the better or some. Trust in your neighbor. You didn't lock your door. And just. You took care of each other. Living in my bed after. There was the highway. We got a job. We built the Christian church. And. One wonderful. We didn't have any country, you know, we walked our. And then he wrote off my murder and sister and I were. In. That. In the. One, one. Remember. The print of postal church. My sister and I walked town. And then it came with some storm. And. And so. My son's school of truth says. You know, I don't want me. Just know. To control that. And say. And then you go put it today. So that. Yeah. I know I know something. For winter. Folks. Scared. Pretty. Great. And. Said, oh, nothing. They just. Get care of it. Go here. Call them. Uh. We didn't have a town. So. Doesn't matter. So lots of changes. And that. I, as I said. I wouldn't want to say myself. I, I let go. We moved this way. Then. We fixed.
Appreciate. Man. Grab some thing. You guys can get out there. Three people. Hang on. Sure, the kids are ready to run.
Yeah.
Here's the side of the line. You got other, other. You know, old before you get okay.
My friend. So. Worked there.
A ninety four warrior.
I stopped. The rain is. Yeah, sitting. I think.
What's the rain? Oh, yeah. In trouble.
You know. Happy birthday.
Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. I didn't think I'd ever make. So you never know. Going to happen.
I.
Did you bet?
Yes, thank you.
Cry it.
Anybody else want to say?
That was the time.
My naturally hard was coming in. I also was in a panic and I moved to Kansas City. Work so hard. And he must say.
I can get out of it.
You're good. I'm there by you too. I actually. It's the way the.
That's probably. Yes.
Oh, it was. Do so much.
Everybody got taken to one thing? Rick's gonna get more. I call it.
Dress.
Oh, it's great. You're gonna be a part of that.
Chaplains.
No, yeah. Yeah, we're good.
Yes, you got.
Good?
No. Is it?
Press up. It's good. Rick's getting good?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Doing something funky.
Find out. All right. Next item on the agenda is item number four, multiple period for the twenty twenty five property tax levy rate to lower the general tax rate from. Point three eight eight zero two point three six zero seven. The purpose of this public hearing is for the board of aldermen to speak their testimony related to the proposed twenty twenty five property tax. Let me rate person wishing you've heard, you've checked in with the city clerk, given their name and address. Each person will be allowed a agreement on time limit, public hearing for property tax. Let me rate is that open? I mean.
May I? But Rick does have a presentation.
Yes. You have your pronounce shirt. Soon as I would you get some power, thanks to present it right now. We got it.
There's. Number eight. The light of the gray. That it has can well. It used to be.
All right. Thank you again, mayor and board. Tonight we'll have a very quick. PowerPoint slide. Manual read on the property tax levy that we go through. Looking at that first page, the process that the city goes through, this is kind of a simplified process, but. City of Smithville in two counties. Claimed that. In July and. Or August. And September. Both of those counties. Approved evaluation. In their board. After that it's done, we get sent a letter giving us our valuation. We take that information. Put it into an online form at the state auditor's office. And then within a day or so, they usually turn around and give us what's called a full form of summary. And that tells us what our maps properly that what we should be. And then, of course, we have to post that publicly seven days in advance, which we did before the board meeting. And then the board will then eventually quickly. You flip the page there. You can see I did two little snippets of what I submit online. And what I did return from the state. So submitted to the state auditor's office is down on left hand side. That is the majority of the numbers that I have to submit. Basically, we take the two county informations, add them together. Submit it and one number on their counter of the state auditor's website. They take that. And produce what's to the right there, which is your final fill form up. And that gives you, that starts off with what our rate was, which is three point eight eight zeros. And then it did that ending number that circled. Gives us what our rate will be for twenty five, which is point three six zero seven. Look in the page there. What, what I did is I went out and looked at what market values had increased since. Well, it's pretty consistent of the reigning was point four to eight point four percent. So you remember. A lot of times we will show you a house at three hundred thousand and show you the pieces that come out of that for the property tax. What I did is I took three hundred thousand dollar house. I multiply it by the high rate, so by eight point four percent. Came up with a three hundred and twenty five thousand, two hundred dollar house. Times that by the residential assessed value, which is nineteen percent. That nineteen percent is set by the state. We have no say on what the accept value should be. So at three hundred thousand last year. That assessed valuation was fifty seven thousand. With the high rate of eight point four percent of increased market value. That new rate comes in at sixty one thousand, seven hundred and eighty eight. Missouri has a rule, Kentucky rule that we, we cannot earn more than what we earned in the previous year. So well, the results from the state is a lower property tax will be rates. That rate again is point three six zero seven. So if you take that for twenty five. Even with the house that increased at the max range that we were seeing online. That increased annual. Property tax for just the city of Smithville. By one dollar and seventy one cents. And of course, this is a hypothetical situation.
Uh, Rick, I have a question on the. On the property tax levy rate, that that point three six zero seven is the maximum, correct?
Correct.
So the city could actually go lower than that, right? Correct? You have to see so true, they could go lower than that maximum amount.
We could in theory, yes. Thank you. And to go higher, we have another bill. Okay. Well, that over here didn't see that tax, property tax summary. This is where we show you the house. What we did for this purpose is we consolidated all of the county individual path rates. They usually have about four or five different buckets that they collect from. We consolidated that into one number to make this a simple feature to look at. As you can see, the piece of the pie, city of Smithville is right in the middle. Well, we're passing jurisdictions. That left side is the twenty four actual. And then the right side is the twenty five projected with the city actual. All the other rates are not publicly known at this point, so what we did is lower the all rate by the same percentage. For everybody else, we supply that to everybody else's. So on that twenty five projected, we still stay right in the middle. Of the tax jurisdictions. And. We lower our rate to that, we say zero seven.
The only thing I really don't know is the seniors are signed up for. Their. Separate.
Right, right.
This year.
From the previous year.
Do we know when they may have that to us?
I don't know if. Every time I talk to them, it still has to go through the board approval later to get public knowledge of everything going on. We have hints of what it kind of look like. How that's going to affect. You know. If you do the calculation with other taxing jurisdictions. I think we. I think what we projected or they projected we would receive for the city was one million, seventy six thousand. This next year, they're projecting at one million, one hundred and thirteen thousand. That number should reflect that senior freedoms. So. And what we did collect, I smoothed that our financial people coming in here. I did project us to get revenues of one point two oh five. For this year, we will hit that number. That difference between what they project and what we actually collect is typically collecting people getting collected from our ears.
Good. Yeah. It's. If I may, one, I would make sure those who are listening online. Then we'll be able to scan this, make sure we. But let Rick just submit right to, to them, just so they.
Yeah.
Yes. It is posted. Good.
Yeah.
Um. Briefly. Yeah, I'm sorry.
Oh, not. Yeah.
So I would make sure a real bit.
Yeah.
This will be posted for our. Our citizens. Yeah, okay. Um, the other couple of things I just want to point out is, is you've heard me say before, since I've been in office in twenty twenty one. Prior to this, city of Smithville relying on the tops primarily and all those little, it's not a bad thing. Obviously, our school district and many others. Be lying under the two and it gives stability to a city when there's sole ownership. What we've seen over the last five years is incredible growth in our commercial. And what's nice is I believe we're eleven, twelve percent increase that or not one fortunately increase, excuse me, eleven percent of our total assessment is potential, correct? They go roughly.
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 Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't know.
That's all right.
So that we, but you are very.
Yeah, yeah. So that my, my point to that, just for folks who are listening, they begin to kind of carry that burden a little bit for infrastructure repairs, different things like that that we have. And. Although. Contrary to popular belief, some may say, well, we don't need that commercial. If we didn't have that commercial growth, we'd have, we'd be having an entirely different discussion with.
That commercial growth is at a higher assessed valuation.
Absolutely. It is. Yes, yes. And certainly, I, I recognize, it's all getting Russell's question. That we as homeowners are, are seeing it from all ends. It's not just the city of Smithville, although it is still a percentage of that, right? I mean, it's still a percentage of. But we're seeing an increase in property insurance. We're seeing an increase in. Other, other areas, which is kind of meaningful been on. So I just want to make sure people understand that. A new way of thinking for us is we exist in the city to provide services to our community and to our citizens to help. Their standard, you know, their, their, their. Able to experience in all states. So this is a very important part of our yearly thing. And although the assessments go up. All right, let me. Help me out, Rick, our.
Our proper text.
If you text it, it goes down.
Yeah.
And yes, I get it. It's going to increase with the valuation.
Right.
Those are just my points, Mary. I just think sometimes. We, we, we forget that we, we are having some success in commercial and will continue to have success.
I guess Dr. Ross will bring. At least tonight.
A portion of rice for you.
Yes.
I think along those notes, that. That increase for the city of Smithville is a lot lower percentage than what the city of Smithville. Expenses are year after year, the increase that we would have. So we're providing the same services, good and services. So we don't, we don't have that type of increase. Our increases were quite a bit higher than. What that. It'd be under one percent. I think we did calculate that it was like way under one percent. For the city of Smithville.
Thank you, Rick. I will close the public hearing. For the twenty twenty five property tax level rate, we do have these. Orders to go on later to have additional items to discuss. Next is number five. The item on the agenda is item number five, public hearing. Where the Smithville Holdings LLC CID, the purpose of this public hearing is to report of aldermen to their best money related to the proposed. Special volumes of LLC CID. Persons wishing to be heard should check in with the city clerk and give their name and address. Each person will have a three minute time limit. The public hearing for the Smithville Holdings LLC CID is now open. Your presentation on this one, too?
Yes.
Good to go.
All right.
Cards, right?
Hey, everybody. I'm Megan Miller with Gilmore and Bell. We are your economic development council. I'm just going to get some high points on the CID. In your packet was the petition along with its associated exhibits, along with, and I think it kind of gave the overview. So we received a petition from Smithville Holdings LLC on August fourth regarding a building located off of one sixty nine. Quick reminder about CIDs. Just very quickly, they can utilize a sales tax, a property tax, special assessments, et cetera, to fund improvements and services within the boundaries of the CID. Right? This CID in particular is one parcel, one building. And that map is exhibit B to CID petition. All statutory notices required by the CID Act were complied with. It was published in the newspaper twice, once and twice. One week and two weeks before the evening. And then also the petition and the notice was sent to the property owner as well as is required. So the petition itself meets all statutory requirements. Just a quick overview of that. This will be a separate political subdivision. It will be governed by a board of directors made up of five individuals. The current board, current, as it said, the petition is for owner representatives, the owners' representatives. And one city rep. One of the owners' representatives does meet the required disinterested owner. I did a little book about that for the RFA. We had a change in CID Act that does require one person to be living in the city of Smithville that have no financial ties to the owner of the building or any of the businesses within, right? So we do have one of those that meets that requirement. The initial board is named in the petition, but successor directors will be appointed by the mayor with the consent of the board of aldermen. It will be a slate, right, that is submitted by the CID itself, and then you guys will vote on that as we move forward. Revenues within the CID will be generated by one percent sales tax, funds those improvements within the district. And then the duration of the district is requested to be twenty seven years, which is the statutory maximum. That deviates from the city's policy a little bit, but like I said, still within the CID's lines. So the difference here than CID's we have done in the past is they are requesting a blight finding. So CIDs are allowed to request a blight finding and they are given additional powers to demolish, remove, renovate, reconstruct, or rehabilitate a building or structure within the CID. So that's essentially right what they're going to do here. In twenty twenty one, just so everybody remembers, the legislature did make a change that made the finding of blight, the definition of blight was same amongst all tax incentives that allow for a finding of blight. So in this case, the applicant stated that the property is blinded due to in sanitary or unsafe conditions and deterioration of site improvements. Again, attached to the CID petition is the blight study. So you can see that there has a number of pictures supporting. At there. They submitted in support of that finding. Also, the CID intends to fund renovation and reconstruction, rehabilitation of the existing building, and those costs are approximately expected to be six hundred and ninety six thousand, eight hundred and twenty five dollars. So does anybody have any questions in particular about the blight finding, the CID in general? I know the applicant is here as his attorney. If you've got any questions for them as well. Yeah.
And then I would question on, on the length. Of it, the max of twenty seven.
Yes.
Those was twenty, right? And then now we go into ten?
No, no, no. That's the three fifty three. We will talk about that the next public hearing. Yeah. So CIDs have a statutory maximum of twenty seven years. The EV policy that the city had put in place. Prefers a twenty year CID, but that's, that is just a policy. The statute allows for twenty seven years, which is what they're requesting in this case.
Thank you.
Yeah. Anyone else? All right. Thank you.
Agreed. No further testimony. I close the public hearing for Smithville Holdings LLC CID.
Mayor, did you want, I, I'm here to have that, and I'm happy to give you minutes just for context if you'd like, but.
We can do it during the.
Three fifty three.
During the three fifty three or during the CID.
That's great. Whatever you like. There this. It's great.
You can see right now, of course, our powers out. All right, next item on the agenda is item number six, public hearing for the Smithville Holdings LLC chapter three fifty three plan. The purpose of this public hearing is for the board of Alderman to hear testimony related to the per- proposed. Smithville Holdings LLC chapter three fifty three plan, persons wishing to be heard should object in with the city clerk and give them their name and address. Each person will be given a three minute time limit, the public hearing for the Smithville Holdings LLC chapter three fifty three plan is now open, we have one card. Dr. Ross, if you don't have the drill, please state your name, address. And appreciate you being here tonight.
Yes, Mary, thank you for the opportunity, uh, my address is one six seven three one River B Road. And I am here representing Central School District, I hope you all had a chance to review the letter I shared yesterday with me. Um, I did want to take the chance to highlight a couple pieces, because this was a, uh, very positive experience, I want to thank particularly the developer and their representation. Uh, how much they engaged with us, it was very easy to communicate, we had constant communication with them. Um, whether that was formally together or informally, I'm just checking in on different things, because I know that there is a. Desire to move this project forward very quickly, so I appreciated their flexibility during this. There are several reasons that the district supports this, and that's the reason I'm here to speak to them. One is the significant increase, it's another twenty eight percent increase in the assessed valuation in two years of that property. But I'm assuming that would win, that would be when all renovations are complete, and as a per square foot comparison to other comparable properties. In the Smithville area, it is a higher per square foot. Um, they have also, uh, worked with us to agree to a four percent biannual increase, which allows us certainty. As we budget matches very closely, as we look at what to anticipate during those reassessment years. And the other thing that we greatly appreciate from the developer and for you guys to consider is that ten year. Limit, although there is a twenty five year opportunity with the chapter three fifty three, the developers proposed a year limit to those pilot payments. And the certainty that they have for their, um, taxes for over the next ten years.
Thank you, Dr. Ross.
I'm going to have to answer a question to you, that's your job.
I mean. I get that tomorrow.
I'm back. All right, um, almost took some like points.
Sorry.
Great, so this is obviously the same property they just discussed. Right, with the the CID, but I wanted to give you some housekeeping items first, so. We did receive a redevelopment plan on September eighth from the applicant, we send out all required notices for that. For tonight, correct, yesterday, after the applicant had. And council had final meetings with the school district, the redevelopment plan was revised, we made two changes. Uh, the two changes were, as Dr. Ross stated, um, a statement that the tax payment would terminate after ten years. And then also made increases to the pilot schedule, as you can see in RFA, right, we jumped from a two percent biannual, biannual. Um, increase to a four percent pilot schedule. Um. So we sent out notices yesterday to tax and jurisdictions. For another public hearing on October seventh, just so we're giving everybody an opportunity to talk about both ways, even though the changes. Don't harm any of the tax jurisdictions, there are benefits to tax jurisdictions, we still wanted to give everybody that ability, so we will have another public hearing on October seventh. Just for that, so that's why we had the change, we saw the amended ordinance, it was just a swap out of the plan. So again, quick tutorial on chapter three fifty three tax payment, statutorily can be utilized for, um, lighted areas for a period of up to twenty five years, for the first ten years. It's a hundred percent, um, abatement on the improvement value above the base of the base, and then for the next fifteen years, it switches. And the abatement is provided on not to exceed fifty percent on both the land and improvements. But obviously, in this case, they're just doing it for ten years, right, so we're not going to that statutory maximum. To do this, the developer or a city in any case, in this case, it's the developer has to create an urban redevelopment corporation. That urban redevelopment corporation or U R C acts as a strong man, right, to trigger the abatement. So they create this entity, they transfer the property to it, and then immediately transfer it back, I've never seen it done any other way, and I guess Kurt can answer if they're going to do it any differently. But it's almost like the deeds are back to back, so trigger the abatement, and then it goes back to the company. So in, in this, I want to point out again, there's a BRIGHT study attached to it, again, showing the insanitary unsafe conditions and deterioration of light, uh, or site improvements. They are asking or providing for pilots above that base, so the tax jurisdictions will receive a base. Plus a pilot on top of that. Um, the pilots will be distributed pro rata to the effective tax jurisdictions, but it's critical to note that the ambulance district and the fire district will not receive a portion of those pilots, because. As is their statutory rights, they can opt out of redevelopment plans like this, and they have done, so I believe they they passed resolutions and do that for the year. And so they have opted out of that, they will receive the taxes that would otherwise we do, the county will just send them what would otherwise we do, and they won't be subject to the redevelopment plan. Um. Lastly, you can see that the tax impact analysis is attached to the plans, it's in the five, and you can see that shows for each tax and jurisdiction, three different scenarios. The estimated tax revenues with no project, the estimated pilots, so if the project is built and three fifty three is activated. And then the estimated tax revenues if the project is built, but no three fifty three is included. So again, assumes a five or four percent pilot increase every other year. Any questions on that? Was a lot of information, I'm sorry.
I'll look right. All right.
Go for it.
Okay.
Let's take your name for the record.
Kurt Peterson, nine hundred West Forty Eighth Place in Kansas City, jury here on behalf of Smithville Holdings, uh. The two guys that are most important, uh, on my team are actually Shane Crease, who all of you know, and John Davis, they're the owners of the. And I just get the privilege of working with them on this and any other projects. Um, this is all script, I hope you don't mind, but it's from the heart, I would just say, uh. I found that really special to meet Miss Bender, I didn't know I was meeting, uh, sitting next to the, the woman of honor, I did when we sat down, but I'm just, uh. It's just really nice to talk to you, and I think it's wonderful the city does that and honors a woman with that much history in the city. Um, and I loved that there was different generations here to support here, and I I hope my family can be like that, and I just thank you for letting me be a part of that, that touched me tonight. Back on script, thank you, happy birthday. I had more to say, but my dad, who is my mentor, taught me, you don't get, uh, you don't get rewarded or paid by the word, so I'm actually going to shorten this up, I thought that was a really good, we don't always know what council's going to present. There's a lot of, there's a lot of substance there, so I think I just want to shorten it up to this, and of course, be ready for any, any question, deep. Surface level, whatever it is, so here as long as you need for questions. But I would just say this, um. Redevelopment renovation, which this is, it's really hard. I've gotten to be in this industry for over twenty years now, it's a lot easier to go, but it's still hard, but it's a lot easier to go out, just. Find a patch of dirt and build something new, this is really hard. You don't know what you're going to find if you've ever done renovations on your house, if you know what I mean, you don't know ultimately, are you going to find something, is it going to cost more, it's hard. These two economic development tools that Megan described really well, that the state provides you the opportunity. To to help us here make this project happen, we're we really, really are important. And I was just summing it up this way, as the team, we just sat down and said, why, why should this board? This mayor think about using those tools here, and we came up with four, there's more, but four, four reasons, first was increase in the tax base. As you heard Dr. Ross and you heard Megan talk about, we are literally ringing up the tax base for everybody, school district, city, all the test jurisdictions. Um, we're also creating a quality aesthetic, uh, this is, this is, um. Just that, and and I was asking Shane, what's this most similar to, and he talked with the Fairview Show, it's just to the south. Um, of the, of the project, said, we're bringing up the quality aesthetic to the whole core layer, and hopefully that draws more investment, people with more ideas like this. So that's two. Three was just more business offerings, you know, they were going to have a number of tenant spaces in here, and bringing more businesses in, that's more. People for residents to patronize and have more options, and then lastly, it's just drop commission, more activity, more business activity, and that's a good thing, so with that, again, um. Exciting enough, we've been working on this for a number of months, that sit here and give you a longer speech, but I think I'll just, uh, mayor, sit down, but then be available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions? Megan wants to go through another PowerPoint of feeling.
Always.
All right, if you know further testimony, it puts a public hearing for Smithville Holdings LLC chapter three fifty three. Got through all three public chats, next item on consent agenda, Alderman Act.
Thank you. Second.
Any discussion? All those favorite for consent agenda say aye.
Aye.
Although they know. Question carries, next item, the administrative report.
Mayor, I do want to highlight a few things on the city administrator's report and, uh, add a couple of new items. Uh, it does indicate the direction finder since. Direction finder citizen survey is under development, we anticipate. Those surveys going out to all households within city limits early October. In order to get a statistically significant sample of responses, we need about three hundred responses. Once E T C has received those responses, they will begin the analysis of the information received. And we're hoping to have early in. Calendar twenty twenty six, a presentation by them on those responses. Will that presentation, he'll include benchmark, excuse me, benchmarking. Information against our prior surveys. And against other communities in our region and nationally, so we're excited today how this process began again. Uh, I think that was, the survey will be sent out. As and can be returned either as a paper copy back to E T C, or there is a. Address that they can fill out online, so they can complete it online or otherwise. As we discussed in our work session, we have formally received, last week, we did receive a letter from the state auditor's office that the, uh, the. Petition drive for an audit of the City of Smithville has been, um. Certified, and we await information on a date for that, as we discussed in the work session, we'll adjust the budget, but we'll come before you all to reflect that. This morning, uh, the, we did have closing for the certificates of participation, so cash is on hand. For the projects identified for that in our utility response. And then, um, there is a report in the city administrator's report, I I have you take a look at, that outlines occupancy at Smithport Campground to date. Numbers just continue to exceed previous year, uh, numbers, and so we're very pleased with that, I also wanted to highlight that last. Thursday was, um, the harvest party at the senior center, they're doing quarterly, monthly or quarterly, quarterly. Quarterly parties, and they had more than sixty participants for, uh, last Thursday's event. And had a great conversation in this afternoon about it, and very well attended, and people are excited for that, so pleased to be able to provide those on a quarterly basis. Uh, we did receive bids, the surety for Commercial Street sidewalks has received the bids. They continue to review those, assuming we have information on. Um, what may occur there, we will bring that actually to the board, the work they need information from, the surety at this point. We, that's my report.
Thank you. The best for this party.
Just going to make a suggestion for our. Um, I would love to see our, our seniors or senior staff, uh, to kind of promote that and. Maybe make that available over the next few weeks as we we do that, for those seniors that may not have access, or.
It will be mailed, so it's.
Okay, just make your reminder to.
This was that reminder.
Yeah, yeah, as I think, you know, sometimes when you get something in the mail, you may look at it or not look at it.
Sure, sure.
It just.
And we will do social media, those remind you as well, and it'll be in the newsletter as well, yes, first name, same. And actually, Chuck just did remind me, mind me, we received. A letter this afternoon, or email this afternoon from the court. Uh, if somebody you weren't aware at this point in time, back in summer of twenty twenty, when we petitioned for for annexation of. Portion of property that, uh, that includes Smithport Park. Is finally gone through that review process, and they have found no objections to that, so we can proceed on our voluntary annexation process, so. We forwarded that information to John, so we'll be moving forward in the next few weeks on voluntary annexation of Smith, of Portland.
One more thing, so the, uh, we also got approval from, um, P and R for the approval to be recorded on the OK River Trail, too.
Yes.
So to start the intiation of the bid process.
Thank you, yeah, a lot has happened since we launched the.
Thank you. Next item, agenda is number nine.
Alderman. Thank you, Mayor, I move to approve bill number three zero seven seven, tax twenty five, destruction director for our second reading.
Thank you, I have second.
You have a second.
Any discussion? Or please start roll.
Alderman Kevilski.
Aye.
Alderman Hartman.
Aye.
Alderman Stone.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Russell.
Aye.
Alderman Atkins.
Aye.
Six zero.
Motion carries for swagger, please read the bill.
An ordinance authorizing the destruction of certain records.
Thank you. Next item has two readings.
Thank you, Mayor, I move to approve bill number three zero seven eight dash twenty five, setting the two thousand twenty five property tax rate. Emergency ordinance sponsored by Mayor Bowley for our first reading.
Thank you, I have second.
Mayor, I have seconds.
Any discussion? Or please start roll.
Alderman Stone.
Aye.
Alderman Russell.
No.
Alderman Atkins.
Aye.
Alderman Hartman.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Kevilski.
Aye.
Five one.
Motion carries for swagger, please read the bill.
And fixing the annual rate of levy on all taxable property within the City of Smithville, Missouri, for the year twenty twenty five pursuant to sixty seven dot one one zero R S M O.
Thank you. Same agenda item, second reading.
Thank you, Mayor, I move to approve bill number three zero seven eight, tax twenty five, setting the two thousand twenty five property tax rate. Emergency ordinance sponsored by Mayor Bowley for our second reading.
Thank you, I have second.
Mayor, I'll second.
Any discussion?
Mayor, the only discussion, I I've something to add, that's the only discussion I that I have, is I, in future. Um, I recommend that, uh, when we get the, the numbers from the both counties, that we're able to discuss. Uh, lowering the rate of what the impact is to the city, we will adjust the number. Well, you're welcome to do that now. So we are discussing this right beside.
I don't know what the impact would be, I mean, we'd have to look at it, I don't, I don't think we need to waste the time, just like I'm saying, in the future, it might be a better idea to be. Look at the way that moving a number down impacts the city. By lowering it, instead of saying we're going to reach a maximum, right, just by seeing what it would do. Uh, to lower it, so that would, that would be to impact, that would have, so we can justify it a little bit better. Thank you.
I love.
Go for it.
I appreciate that, I mean, we are lowering it, yes, staying at the maximum. But several you've heard me through the years saying, I've been on this so long before, if we do that. Then where do we get some of the services at, because we. We had a period of time where they set it at zero, and we're still trying to catch up. The setting it at zero, so I think it could have a very negative impact if we looked at going lower than the maximum we considered at. As you know, last year, I voted no on last year, because we should increase it, I'm not for an increase in property taxes, but this is technically. Lowering it, even though the assessed value of your properties went up, so I think we just need to be very, very careful now, looking at. The big impact of going lower than what we considered.
Thank you. And the calculations also presented on the performance, so she wanted to calculate what the difference was, and. Pretty straightforward calculation. Yes. And the million dollar we collect for property taxes is about half of our police budget.
Yes, sir.
So you start cutting police, because a lot of your waste funders is separate fund, so. That's the discussion we have to ask, or we try cutting. The biggest focus is.
I I agree, I think that's a great idea to look at different, uh, how it impacts the city, not necessarily affecting police force, but other ways that it's been adding impact to the city.
A lot of the other fund are direct funds, you know, transportation does, the sales tax only for transportation parks, police is only for those items that are voted on for. The property taxes, the general fund, with a small sales tax as well, so.
And going back to what Alderman Wilson said, that we cut last year and we, uh, reduced the police, so, uh, I appreciate that, thank you.
Or please start roll.
Alderman Hartman.
Aye.
Alderman Atkins.
Aye.
Alderman Kevilski.
Ayes.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Russell.
No.
Alderman Stone.
Aye.
Five one.
Motion carries for swagger, please read the bill.
An ordinance fixing the annual rate of levy on.
An ordinance fixing the annual rate of levy on all taxable property within the city of Smithville, Missouri for year twenty twenty five pursuant to sixty seven dot one one zero RSM.
Thank you. Next item is number eleven, Alderman Atkins.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve bill number three zero seven nine dash twenty five. The Shops at Smithville Community Improvement District, first reading.
Thank you. Have a second.
Mayor, second.
Any discussion? We do still have everybody here.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Atkins.
Aye.
Alderman Stone.
Aye.
Alderman Pavelski, aye. Alderman Russell.
Aye.
Alderman Hartman.
Aye.
Six zero.
Motion carries for swagger, please read the bill.
An ordinance approving petition for establishment of the Shops at Smithville Community Improvement District. Establishing the district and making findings and authorizing actions related to establishment of the district.
Thank you. Next item is number twelve, Alderman.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve bill number three zero eight zero dash twenty five, the Shops at Smithville redevelopment plan. Chapter three fifty three, first reading, revised development plan from September twenty second, two thousand twenty five.
Thank you. Have a second.
Mayor, second.
Before I open up for discussion, I, I want to thank staff and school district and everyone else who's worked on this, um. My predecessor is present. It reminded me of the tip of twenty seventeen, but didn't go so smoothly. So Dr. Moss, thanks for being here. Cynthia, everybody, thanks for working on this. Megan. I do appreciate all the hard work and transparency, so. It is not unnoticed. Any discussion? Clark, please start roll.
Alderman Russell.
Aye.
Alderman Hartman.
Aye.
Alderman Atkins.
Aye.
Alderman Stone.
Aye.
Alderman Pavelski, aye. Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Six zero.
Motion carries for swagger, please read the bill.
An ordinance approving the Shops at Smithville redevelopment plan pursuant to chapter three fifty three of the revised statutes of Missouri. Declaring that the redevelopment area described therein as a white area and making findings and authorizing actions related to the plan.
And as Megan mentioned earlier, we will have a second public hearing and a secondary at our next meeting, so. Anybody have any, that's the straw. Next, we have public comment. Brian Fulmer, you're the only public card, be safe, Sam, and. I just feel the record, you know, the rules.
So, fighting Brian Fulmer. Eight thirty two, each twenty first Avenue. North Penn's apartment five, North Penn City, injury six four one one six. I, um. Spent the last, honestly, year. In another state, helping out a family member. I recently moved that, I moved back to the area. I, um, watched the last couple of board meetings on, online. And I was frankly concerned a little bit, and I want to share this with the boards, the fact that. We were moved to our residents. From being able to have more meetings. And. It is. I know there is an ordinance. I don't know if it was. Implemented since I was the mayor. May have done that before, but I never knew that ordinance. But I was concerned that. Both those residents. Didn't exactly know why they were removed and are not allowed to. Speak to the board any longer. During the time that I served as mayor of Smithville. Eight years there, I had never had to remove anyone from. The board meeting. There were a couple of instances where. We had people not following proper procedure, for me to fill in the part, et cetera. And I. Rather than kicking them out. I told them that they could fill in a card or the mayor. I, I mean, with a clerk and then proceed that. And. Frankly, it was just concerning for them. Sometimes, um. Those kind of things. Lead our residents. Feeling like that. They don't have an opportunity to ra, have a voice here, choose more than one. And so. I would encourage the board to reconsider or revamp. Ordinance, that ordinance. Section one twenty dot zero four zero. For reasons, um, from my perspective. Being online. I did not see personally any reason why either one of the residents should have been removed from the unit. And I would invite the board of all the men to. Address that ordinance and perhaps revise it so that. Our residents feel like they have a voice. One of the biggest challenges we have is that yes. Is absolutely required that we maintain the property form in the board meeting. Um, I almost had to throw a resident out of the board meeting once because she. Was using some language that is inappropriate for the, for the board meetings, that she left on her own court. Uh, just to ask, did the board consider. Revamping that ordinance or being more specific over the reasons why. Someone would be removed from the meeting. I'm also encouraging the board members to. Allow these residents to come back so they don't feel isolated. One of those is a. New pediatric, a new, um. Child period or, uh, uh, dental. Here in Jared. And because of what happened to him. And some other things going on, he is not gonna be here permanently. He's already indicated that. And it looks like that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Linda, you have a song to cover. I would remind former mayor Fulmer that our meetings are recorded and in your farewell speech, you referenced that exact ordinance. So it exists when you. Were mayor. So you may want to go back and watch that.
I will.
Next item on the agenda is. Your business.
Yeah, I, I have some, I have some sharing up, please. Um, the first, I had two. Uh, the person that I'd like, I'd like to open up, um. Ordinance one seventy dot four zero, um, specifically banning citizens from the audience before.
Make sure you, I'm sorry. What would you like to propose?
The one point of four zero of the, as we've ordered, that, that, uh, the former mayor was referenced. What, what, what would you like to do? I'd like to respect simply the, the name of citizens. Right, I mentioned that, is that, is that the, the ordinance to, is that what we need to do? At the ban citizens, uh, from the board, um, what, what are the reasons for that? I think we, and if, if the, in the ability to bring them back to lift the ban on them, I think is something that, uh, will address it well.
Okay. So anybody else want to add to future work session? I, I think we stated also that the procedure, if somebody would like to come back as a, a board member, would have to propose a. Resolution and a, and a second and the four, six of the board would have to vote on it. That's what's in the, the statute, correct? So.
That's what you're standing here, that's statute.
Okay. It doesn't sound like you're the second bring your session, so.
Thank you, Mayor. The next item, I'd like to give Cynthia a copy of this too, to make sure it's added to the record, please. And, uh, it's, it's, it's my, my, uh, uh, name, uh, sent to, uh, Mr. Bowley and the, and the board. Um, subject to resignation and ward to Alderman position. Uh, dear Mayor Bowley and members of the, uh, Board of Aldermen. It was heavy heart that I submit my, my resignation and award to Alderman for the city of Smithville, Missouri, effective nine twenty four, twenty twenty five, that's tomorrow. I've been honored to serve our community and work alongside dedicated individuals to advance the interest of the town of Smithville, Missouri. However, due to recent circumstances, including the threat of impeachment proceedings. And unwarranted demands to involve my family in matters unrelated to their actions. I've concluded that stepping down is in the best interest of myself, my family and the community. I do not have a personal relationship with the other aldermen. That the other aldermen have with Mayor Bowley, nor do I desire one. This decision was not made lightly, as my commitment to public service remains steadfast. I am grateful for the opportunity to have contributed to serving the members of Ward Two. And I wish the city continued progress and unity. The employees of Smithville do an outstanding job day in and day out. To the brave men and women of the Smithville Police Department. Stay safe and may God continue to have you six. To my fellow aldermen, I urge you to spend time in all areas of your ward and return phone calls. Remember that you work for your constituents, not the mayor, no matter what he or she may say or think. I would like to thank my constituents for their votes and for backing me up. My family for their support and devotion. And my awesome God for his grace, mercy and love. Please let any necessary correspondence to my contact information above. Or email me my address at ronald.russell@att.net. Sincerely, Ronald triple R Russell, Alderman Ward Two, City of Smithville, Missouri.
You have any business with the board? So entertainment motion, you turn.
Yeah, I'd like to. I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you. Have a second.